Please stand for the motion.
President, this is the House of America. To the United States of America, to the people of this land, one nation under God, the indivisible, and the living justice of our all.
Here.
Mr. Jim?
Present.
Mrs. Wolford?
Here.
Mr. Scopora? Mr. Boldnary?
Here.
Mr. Forish?
Here.
Mayor Griffin?
Present.
Six present. May I have a motion for approval of minutes from the July 8, 2013 meeting, please?
Madam Mayor, I move that the July 8, 2013 minutes be approved and accepted and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk where they will be available for reading and inspection to anyone.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Madam Mayor, I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. May I have approval of fiscal department reports on paid bills for the month of July 2013? May I have the motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favors?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, is that, that's number five correct? And, Mrs. Buck, I think you said that there's an expected deficit at the transfer station from the approximately $146,000, is that, is that what I'm reading?
That's my prediction.
That's your personal?
Based on previous years' historical data and what we've made so far.
How much do you expect to take in? What is that figure? And historical data shows us that we've taken in $250,000? Is that in 2010 or 2011?
No, it's previous years before that we were making $500,000. But the $140,000, the $60,000, and another $60,000 in November, December is also based on if the weather cooperates.
I see. It could be larger than that. You're sort of setting the minimum?
Yes, like I said, if the weather cooperates, like I stated in this report, that those are the figures that we generally ever see.
I see. I presume other parts of the budget are going to, you know, make it so that it won't be a negative number at the end, such as maybe income, personal income, tax?
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
With the budget, the way things are, you don't know, you know?
I see.
Are there going to be salt, more salt?
So you're $146,000 projected short on revenue, and we are using $160,000 from last year's surplus to balance this budget?
$115,000 in sanitation for the transfer station, $115,000 short from what we budgeted at $700,000.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
My name is Bush Berkey. I am at Ailey's Bakery at 335 Main Street in Lake Grove, right off the street. I have a little bit of complaint coming from the parking authority in town here. I discussed it twice already with the meter made, and the third time it's happened to me again. Every month, I am issued a parking pass. Would you know that they are clipped to the rearview mirror of your car, which is facing towards the parking lots area? For three times in a row, I have received a parking ticket. Why, I don't know. It don't make sense. I question her about it, she laughs, she walks away. She says she don't see it. I don't understand how you can't see it. It's there. It's clearly visible. It hangs on the window. The ticket was handed out at 3:30 on Friday afternoon. Now, I witnessed her at 10:00 a.m. on the streets. I witnessed her at 12:00 noon on the streets. And then she turns around, she gives it to me at 3:00 in the afternoon. I don't know if there's a vendetta against us up there or what. I hope not. But I am feeling, this is just me, that I feel that they are just not being trained properly. When you take a ticket, you know for a fact it's put right onto the windshield of the vehicle underneath the wiper blade. When you stick it in there, you can't help but notice that. I just, I don't have no, I don't know what else to say. But this takes time out of me. I had to take my sticker off of this today to go down and return. I had to put a quarter in the meter to take care of it. But then I gotta laugh when I get it. Is the training what there? I don't know. But let's, you know, I look at it this way. If it was like in a school, the third time, that would be discipline upon that child. And the second comment I have is every single day, I have to look at the Mozart house. You have to look at the Mozart house. Every single day. For the past nine months now, there has been no secure lighting, the weeds are atrocious in the back of it, the security is deplorable around it, and the owner don't seem like he is around. Now, that is one of the biggest buildings that are sitting on Main Street here in Lake Grove, and it's a catastrophe waiting to happen. And Lord, if it does, we all just better run, because it's nothing but a wooden structure and a tinderbox. And it's going to take out a lot of businesses and maybe some lives with it, because there's people and residents that live up along there. I don't, I don't know. I just don't know about the town. Just like this episode coming down here tonight, I come down here to walk down and what's sitting in the middle of the road but the fence around Jeffers Gold's burned-out building? It's in the road. Why? It has "Do Not Take Down" for police protection, but it's down. It's been down all day. Now, I know many of your officers and everything has been passed there, but no one has stopped, have they, to pick it up and put it? Are they expecting the citizens of the town to do it? I just, I just have to speak my piece on this. But the main two concerns I have is about this parking.
Well, Bush, did Kay, did she offer an explanation?
No.
Did you, did you see her placing the ticket? Were you there at the time she gave you the ticket?
Who else would be working?
Shortly thereafter?
Who else would be working?
Is Kay the only one doing the ticketing?
We've begun to implement a situation where other people are issuing tickets as well.
But we would know, do they have a number?
Correct.
We would know who issued him the tickets.
What number do you have on the ticket?
Are they all the same?
Officer 401.
Are they all the same?
Officer 401. Who's that?
But you know, my vehicle sits there, the same spot, every day, never moves. It sits, it sits, it sits. And they look at that every single day. But then just tend to turn around and give a citizen a ticket on top of it, especially a working citizen in town that's trying to get better for the community here, to get that to it.
But where's the card that you have to hang? Does that have a, does that have a hole in it? Does that goes on the, on the rearview mirror?
Yes, it does, Mr. Jim. Don't you have one?
No.
But you're parking in a reserved space?
I know, but I didn't get one of those things. If I had one, I'd be glad to put it on. But my point is, did you put it on the mirror, that, that card?
Yes, it's clearly stayed in there. The place on the mirror.
And that's where you had it?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not art meant to.
That's, that's all I have to say.
Does anybody else wish to speak?
As far as Bush, one other thing, as far as the Mozart house goes, there's been some efforts to repurpose that property, sell it actually. The owner has been rather stubborn in her refusing. She actually won't move off her asking price. I, you know, we, I really don't know what to say about Mozart house. It looks, it looks horrible. We know that, everybody's aware of that, and you know, as much as you are.
I'm a lot concerned about the selling aspect of it, is the safety aspects of it.
Well, if it was sold, then that would probably solve your concerns.
But yes, because in true words, somebody's going to get hurt, especially with no idea at night and at, you know, transit's going to start entering.
Yeah. Especially the.
Are those doors secured? Thank you.
Thanks, Bush. Anybody else wish to speak? Do we have any border authority reports? Department reports? Chairman Joe, John here? Ann?
Madam Mayor? Members of council, the first item appears on the agenda under the Administration Finance Department. It is a resolution. The title is Accepting Proposal of Mullin and Londerburn Associates, Inc. to Extend the Contract Between It and the City for Updating Maps and Tables in 2010 Comprehensive Plan, Planning, and Redevelopment Planning. Therefore, be resolved that a proposal submitted by Mullin and Londerburn Associates, Inc. Attaches Exhibit 8 to Extend the Contract with the City for the purpose stated above for a period of one year from the date of this resolution at a total contract price for the one-year extension, not to exceed $2,800, as set forth in Exhibit B. Attached here, two being the same, is hereby approved and accepted. In Section 2, simply authorizes the proper city officers to sign all documents and take all actions necessary to carry into effect this resolution. Resolved in council this date, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have the motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Boldnary, second please.
I'll second that motion.
Any questions or discussion? Questions? Questions, discussion?
Alex, I presume this is for wrapping up the EIP, so to speak, as a follow-up?
This is specifically for the comprehensive plan updates. In March 2012, we entered into a one-year agreement with M&amp;L to do some work for us, but not to exceed a price of $10,000. And what we're doing is extending it one year, and it's $2,800. A specific issue arose to a property owner in town who has 24 properties that 20 of them are vacant, and we're really concerned that they might start getting fire sold, if you will, you know, and sold at a very low price, which could result in flips and negative consequences to the neighborhoods where they're located. So we want to have a strategy to address those properties, and that's really what this is about.
I would note if that happens to be the Sweetie Properties, is that the one you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I think there's at least 16 of them that are scheduled for tax sale.
They were listed in the most recent bill of liquid.
That's correct. But I mean, they are set to go up for tax sale. And, you know, you just have to wonder if, I don't know whether we're in the tax sale purchasing business, but which would be cheaper, trying to get them out of there or what, or for us to take them over?
Richard, this is every other year with him, at the end of the, the last minute, he pays for all his taxes.
Oh, he does.
But it is in a state, and so it's a little bit different. Certainly something we want to be concerned with, and the concern is there's a, particularly in the six-word concentration of these homes, which if not addressed, could really be cancerous and pull down the neighborhoods in three.
But they're not going to pay their taxes, they're certainly not going to fix the properties, that's for certain.
Right.
How many times have we contacted them?
I've been in contact with them, I don't know specifically how many times. They are frequent flyers within our code enforcement office.
And that's not a good way, frequent flyers.
Any other questions or discussions? This is Resolution 201339. Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Boldnary?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jimonangelo?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
There are six yeses. Motion carried. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item under the Administration Finance Department is also a brief resolution. It's entitled Extending Paid Time Off Benefits for Non-Union Part-Time Employees. Now therefore be resolved, Section 1, that the part-time position of community service officer shall have the following paid-off benefits established on a pro-rata basis: A) 32 hours annually for vacation; B) 16 hours annually for personal time off. Section 2 authorizes the proper city officers to sign all documents and take all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution. Section 3 recites that the benefits should become effective immediately, and Section 4 recites that any and all other resolutions inconsistent here with or hereby repealed. Resolved in council this date, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion? Ron, make a motion. I have a second.
I second, Madam Mayor.
Can Mr. Ron make a second? Any questions or discussion?
What are we doing now?
In 2011, the city hired a non-union part-time employee who currently works 32 hours a week. Since that time, which is approximately obviously two years, that person has not had any paid off time. If they were hired, for example, under the bargaining units, that would have been given to them upon being hired. So it's kind of an issue right now of fairness. Again, this is still a person who's not represented by either the ASME or the FOP in order to be consistent with other union benefits or other employee benefits and with the policy manual that the city's adopted. We wanted to grant this person paid time off.
You're in fact giving him a raise.
That would be correct, sir, if you look at what we have.
Any other questions or discussion?
Jim, Richard, that's why we're, we're bringing it to council. It's something, you know, we're taking lightly and want you to consider.
Considering.
I understand.
Any other questions or discussion? Hey, Barb?
Who is this person?
This would be our community service officer. That's new last name.
Straka.
Straka. Ms. Straka, please.
Does he live in Lake Grove?
She does.
She does? Oh, okay.
Her name is Beth, Elizabeth.
Oh, I know. She is a police officer. All right. Okay.
Okay, Barb? This is Resolution 201340. Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Jimonangelo?
No.
Mr. Forish?
No.
Mr. Boldnary?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
But it's four yes, two no. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item appears under the Public Works Department, and it is a resolution, and it is entitled Amending Transfer Station Rates. Now therefore be resolved, Section 1, that scheduled fees and charges for transfer station services being the same, is hereby amended as set forth on Exhibit 8 attached here to. Set rates shall remain in full force and effect until such time as they may be amended or changed by council. Section 2 authorizes the mayor, city manager, secretary, and any other proper city officer to take any and all action necessary to carry into effect these changes authorized by the resolution. Section 3 recites that any and all other resolutions inconsistent here with or hereby repealed, and Section 4 recites that according to the provisions of ordinance 1998-10, notice of the change in rates shall be advertised for two consecutive weeks in a newspaper of general circulation, and that the within resolution rate change shall become effective 30 days from the date of the last publication unless a written appeal or protest is filed with the city secretary within the 30-day period. If such an appeal is filed, then this change shall be proposed by ordinance to be considered by council at the next possible council meeting. Resolved in council this date, the proper motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by this solicitor.
May I have a motion, please?
I so moved, Madam Mayor.
Can Mr. Boldnary second?
I'll second that.
And Mr. Jimonangelo? Any questions or discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I think my recommendation was that we increase the initial cost, the $12, which we shot down. Apparently, the, the help could not prorate the balance of the cost over the 1,800 pounds, and so we had difficulty with that. While I'm favor this amount, I don't think it's enough, since Delta Group has already said that the minimum cost for 200 pounds is $13.83. So, in other words, we're not going to make any money until we do probably 600 pounds is where we would start the break-even point. So that's why I think that, yes, I'm very much in favor of raising the rates, but I think that that initial rate has to be somewhat higher just to meet our cost and then start the proration up to the $92. But as I'm looking at this, we don't, we don't even break even until we do at least 500 or 600 pounds. And therefore, my recommendation is, and I'd like to make an amendment, I don't know whether the council would agree to $13.98 or $14, but I think at least that the bottom figure should be at least 12. Anyway, that's, I would offer that as an amendment, to partially meet the $12 for the first amount, and $2 on the top. Otherwise, you have to do something, if you start at 10, the next 200 pounds, you're going to have to charge maybe $3 for 200 pounds, or $4, or do some sort of proration in the beginning so that you can catch up to the cost. And all I'm talking about is that $10 is not going to, for 200 pounds, we're going to lose $3.83. So I'm recommending we go to 12, and hopefully that'll work out, and we'll get the higher rate on the top. And we're not gouging anybody. We're still going to lose money, but at least we'll get, we'll lose less. So that's my, that's my amendment, $12 instead of 10.
Mr. Jim, I'm just confused. What do you mean by "and we'll get the money on the top"? I understand increasing from $8 or $10 to $12, but are you proposing another increase or just?
No, I'm not. I'm going to say that just for simplicity purposes, we'll just go to the $12 for now, and if Delta Group's numbers are proved incorrect, or we find that we can make money at that point, then, then perhaps I'd be willing to make another recommendation. But I think it's, I think it, we paid, what, $98,000 for that study, and they said it takes $13.93 to process 200 pounds. I just can't see why we would do it for 10. It's the same thing with the water rates, you know, we're selling water below cost, and Rosie is familiar with that, because I think Charlie Moff has been on that case for a while.
That's why I'm going to second your motion, Richard.
Oh, did you second?
I am going to.
All right.
Because I agree with you.
All right.
We shouldn't be selling services less than they cost, or, shouldn't we lose money?
That could be, we have to work.
No, well, she just.
She said she was going.
Yeah, well, I second the motion.
Okay, now we'll just vote on that. All in favor of the amendment, the rates from $10 to $12?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Richard.
Do you have your names? Oh, I have my names, sorry.
By the way, I did talk, one of our citizens who was out in the audience before the meeting, and they said they love it as a convenience, and the small raise will not affect their coin out there. Thank you.
Now, we just voted on the amendment, we have to vote on the.
Now, we have to vote on the entire resolution. The only thing different now is the $10 now becomes $12. Other than that, it's the same resolution.
May I just make a suggestion to council? And we kind of had this discussion at the agenda prep session, but we weren't able to. Richard, the challenge was, for the weights of 220 and 240, because of the way the scales work, theoretically, if one customer came with 220 pounds and another customer came with 100 pounds, the customer who came with 100 pounds actually was paying more if we did the proration. So we can adjust that. And what I'm suggesting is, council might want to consider raising the minimum weight from 200 to whatever, 250.
No, you can't, you can't do that, Alex. You cannot do that. You've got to, if you raise the minimum amount, then you've got to raise the, I mean, if you raise the tonnage up to 250, you've got to raise the rate. This does not make sense. You ought to do it like Verizon does it, and AT&amp;T does it. You get into that next minute, regardless of whether you use all 60 seconds, you pay for the minute.
Would you, would you like to finish?
You know what I'm saying? You go over 200 pounds, you're into the 300-pound bracket.
Yeah, that person would end up paying, you know, again, we can do that, and I don't mind doing it. What I'm suggesting is, you go up to $15 and make it a round number. If your concern is, we're losing money, your amendment doesn't solve the issue. It just, it just slows the bleeding, doesn't stop the bleeding.
Well, you should have recommended it go on to $15 before I offered the amendment. I am, I'm sticking with the $15.
I understand, I'm just trying to make that suggestion to council. Realize that the minimum doesn't average at 200. Often, we handle for people at AD and so forth, so when you're looking at the delta numbers you have to take into account, they're using an average weight of 200 for that transaction cost.
Well, I'm suggesting that if it goes over the 200, you charge the 300-pound cost.
Well, then we need to make that clear within our, in our.
I don't know. It wasn't clear at the $10 figure either.
This is very clear. Your Attachment B, if you would look at it, tells you that after the amount of 200, what the amount would be per pound. So it's very clear. What you've done is made it less clear, which I can adjust, I can handle that. But I'm just.
Why is that less clear? I mean, if you charge $12 for the original 200 pounds, you just divide the remainder, $90, $90, $90 by, or whatever it is, 97, I think, by 1,800 pounds, and you come out with the per pound. I just don't buy into it. My, my problem really is, and you have raised it, if they go over, if they're between 200 and 300 pounds, do they pay the 300-pound rate? Or you tell me that you, you charge by the pound after 200?
The scale takes measurements, rounding up, in 20-pound increments. So what is happening is 220, 240, those people would pay less than the person, if they did a per-pound rate based on the $95 a ton cost, per-pound rate, that prorated. per pound rate, that prorated rate would actually be less than the minimum charge. Now, so in essence, what you're doing is you're asking, which is fine, you're saying it's twelve dollars for two-hundred-and-forty and below.
No, I'm saying, twelve, no. You said, I thought this was for two-hundred.
It is. But you understand, you come in for two-hundred and you pay twelve dollars. I prorate the guy at two-hundred-and-forty and he actually pays a little less than you do.
Why?
Because you're using a prorate of ninety-five dollars per pound for ton. And so that proration comes out to?
You can't do that. You can't do it that way.
Wouldn't it be ten dollars plus?
They say twelve.
Twelve.
You could.
So they couldn't, they'd charge less.
Then it would be a different rate. But I understand, I mean, it might work. This was the issue before, it's no problem. You're just making the minimum two-hundred and forty.
So, what, I think, okay, so if you bring in two-hundred and forty, you pay the minimum twelve dollars, and then you prorate the forty pounds, you charge?
I don't know. I was led to believe that the minimum was two-hundred.
You're going to prorate that two-hundred to that two-thousand pounds in between that at that point. Not that just that forty pounds. I mean, after two-hundred pounds, the twelve dollars you take off that ninety-two, you had eighty dollars to play with between that two-hundred pounds and up. It has to have a scale to that.
Let me, let me.
I don't want to just make work, I want to make it right.
So do I, that's my suggestion.
So what happens if you go for two-hundred pounds?
You say, here's what I'm saying, how much is a ton cost now? What would a ton cost?
Currently, currently, the price per pound is?
No, I want the ton cost.
It is ninety-one dollars is the current.
No, you add four dollars to it.
We are actually adding, yeah, that's, so it would be ninety-five. And the way we're looking at amendment would be ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven, all right. Then you pay the twelve dollars for the first two-hundred pounds, and you subtract that from the ninety-seven. That leaves you eighty-five dollars, right? And then you divide that by eighteen hundred, and that gives you your per-pound cost.
That's not the way the scale's been calibrated, but we can recalibrate it.
Well, please do.
You all want to ask this question? How's it calibrated now?
It's simply calibrated on that total ton charge.
Oh, okay. I see. So if I brought in two-hundred and forty, I'd be paying less than the person that brought in two-hundred because it's calibrated on the ninety-five?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Give your calculator, divide eighty.
I provided the figures for you on exhibit B, and you can see the per-pound prices.
How much is eighty-five dollars divided by eighteen hundred?
That wasn't something I provided, but I'm simply saying?
Can you, you have a calculator with you?
It would be point four seven, yeah, forty-seven.
Four seven.
Zero point zero four seven.
So anything over?
Four dollars and seventy cents per hundred pounds after the two-hundred. Or, or four point seven cents per pound after the two-hundred. And that's the way you'll make your money.
You calibrate it that way?
Yes, sir.
Now, can we go to the original?
Unless there's further discussion, Madam Mayor, we're at a point where we are voting on the resolution as amended, which would now include the twelve dollars for the two-hundred pounds. Otherwise, same resolution.
Right. This is resolution two thousand thirteen forty-one as amended. Mr. Jivinangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Baldonari?
Yes.
Merrick Griffin?
Yes.
Thirty-six, yes. Motion carried, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item appears also under the Public Works Department. It is a resolution, it is entitled to authorizing the city manager to accept the allocation from the Westmoreland County two thousand and thirteen Community Development Block Grant Program. And now therefore be resolved, section one, that the council of the city of Latrobe does hereby approve the action of the city manager to submit written confirmation to Westmoreland County indicating acceptance of a community development block grant in the total amount of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And section two, that the mayor, city manager, city secretary, and any other proper city officer are authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution resolved in council. This date, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by this solicitor.
May I have a motion?
Sound move, Madam Mayor.
Second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Baldonari, any questions or discussion? Questions, discussion? Okay. This is resolution two thousand thirteen forty-two. Mr. Baldonari?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Jivinangelo?
Yes.
Merrick Griffin?
Yes.
Thirty-six, yes. Motion carried, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item again appears under Public Works. It's a resolution entitled to authorizing the city manager to sign reimbursement request form number nine and acceptance certificate documents for the PennDOT Safe Road to School project. Now therefore be resolved, section one, that the council of the city of Latrobe hereby authorizes and directs the city manager to execute behalf of the city certain documents to seek reimbursement for estimate number nine, the amount of three hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-four cents, and to execute an acceptance certificate in the ECMS format for the project. And section two, that the mayor, city manager, city secretary, and any other proper city officer being or hereby authorized and directed to execute any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution and the acceptance authorized herein. Resolved in council this date, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by this solicitor.
May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forish, second?
I second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Baldonari, any questions or discussion? Questions, discussion? Okay. This is resolution two thousand thirteen forty-one. This is resolution two thousand thirteen forty-one.
Barb, this in no way, shape, or form, we have to sign, we have to execute this acceptance certificate. This does not mean that this council approves, endorses, the work that was done on the Safeway, safe routes to school. We met with Gibson Thomas a couple of weeks ago. Again, we reviewed all their inspector notes. It was explained to us that, and this isn't the first time, that we can't really prove that the work wasn't done to the standards that were set forth by PennDOT. So we don't have a lawsuit. In essence, that's what has been said. However, I would like to see these crosswalks appearance improved. Gibson Thomas got us a price on a coating, a seal, a high gloss seal, which would bring the anticoloring agent, I believe. It was relatively inexpensive, I was surprised. And I wanted to do, personally, I just wanted to do one crosswalk to see how it looks. And I don't know if we've gotten any further than that, but I think if we can do one crosswalk, see how it turns out, then we might have, you know, incentive to do the other crosswalks. Because as I've said dozens of times before in these chambers, they look like hell. They're unacceptable, however, we're stuck with them. We're not stuck with them in the condition they're in. There are ways to improve the looks and bring them up to the standards that Greensburg and Indiana and Blairsville, their crosswalks, how they look. And that's all I really want to do at this point. I don't know at what stage we're at. We're going to do this in-house or hire contractors or even volunteers to come in and do at least one crosswalk and see how it turns out. That's where we are in this, but we do have to sign, we do have to approve this, what is it, acceptance certificate from PennDOT.
Do you have anything to add?
Simply by signing off and agreeing to that, will put us in the driver's seat to be able to do what Mr. Baldonari is requesting. We have, Public Works has used the sample of the product. We weren't terribly satisfied with how that turned out. We did a small section. We're working with our local Sherwin-Williams vendor to determine the right mix and match. It will be power washed, and then we will do a whole section, just again, and move along as we can. I love the idea, however, of volunteers, and certainly are always welcoming them to do things to stretch the city's investments. Unfortunately, it's on our dime at this point.
This is resolution two thousand thirteen forty-three. Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Baldonari?
Yes.
Mr. Jivinangelo?
Yes.
Merrick Griffin?
Yes.
Thirty-six, yes. Motion carried, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, there are two items not appearing on the agenda. I've been asked if we could amend the agenda and put them on. We have let out bids or specifications for bids for the two thousand and thirteen street paving program and the two thousand and thirteen CDBG paving program. The bids have been submitted in order to keep matters moving at this point in the summer. Mr. Brazianis asked if I could do some resolutions that would accept these bids. We have a tab sheet, and I believe the tab sheet's been given to everybody. So with that, I'm going to ask if someone could make a motion to amend the agenda to include two items, which would be by a resolution, accepting the bid and awarding a contract for the two thousand and thirteen paving program. That would be item four, or item five, actually, and item four would be the same kind of a resolution for the CDBG paving program.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda.
Okay, Mrs. Wolfert, second, please.
I'll second that.
Mr. Jivinangelo? Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post. Okay, motion carried.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a, when the resolution did not appear in your package, but it's a very standard resolution that we've passed from year to year. And this would be resolution two thousand thirteen, accepting bid and awarding contract for the two thousand and thirteen Community Development Block Grant Street Paving Program. Now therefore be resolved, section one, that the bid of dairy construction for material and labor for the two thousand and thirteen Community Development Project Street Paving Program in the amount of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand thirty-two dollars and twenty-five cents be in the same as hereby accepted. And section two, that a contract is hereby awarded to Dairy Construction for the two thousand and thirteen Community Development Block Grant Street Paving Program at the unit prices and for an amount, a contract amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-nine thousand thirty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Section three, that this contract shall be subject to review by the city engineer and also to review and confirmation by the county of Westmoreland. Section three, that the mayor, city manager, city secretary, and any other proper city officer be in or hereby authorized and directed to take any and all action and sign any and all documents necessary to carry into effect this resolution and the contract awarded herein. Resolved in council this date, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by this solicitor.
We need a motion. Okay, Mr. Forish, second, please.
I second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Baldonari, any questions or discussion?
My only question is, Mr. Kelly, we are awarding the contract to Dairy Construction Company in the amount one hundred and twenty-three thousand seven?
One hundred and thirty-nine thousand thirty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. One three nine zero three two.
We?
There are two sheets. One sheet is a landscape in its format, and it has a CDBG on top. The other one is a portrait in its format, and it says Joseph E. Street. Dairy Construction happened to be the low bidder for both contracts.
The one hundred and twenty-three will be the next motion, the next resolution. What I just outlined was the paving that will be accomplished solely with community development block grant funds. I lost to say which streets that appeared to Washington and Harding.
Dairy will get both jobs.
And they're both jobs. So don't make another motion for the other two.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Barb? This is resolution two thousand thirteen forty-four. Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jivinangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Baldonari?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Merrick Griffin?
Yes.
Thirty-six, yes. Motion carried, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm going to do the next one, and this would also be a resolution. It would be acceptance of bid and awarding of contract for the two thousand and thirteen street paving program. Now therefore be resolved, section one, that the bid submitted by Dairy Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of one hundred and twenty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents for the two thousand and thirteen street paving program, according to the bid specifications being the same as hereby accepted. Section two, that a contract is hereby awarded to Dairy Construction Company, Inc., for a total contract price not to exceed one hundred and twenty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents for the two thousand and thirteen street paving program, according to the bid specifications submitted. Section three would state that this contract is subject to the review by the city engineer and is further subject to the allowance of a period of forty-eight hours for the contractor to make technical corrections to any errors that may be included in the bidding. Section three would be the standard paragraph authorizing the proper city officers to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution and the contract awarded herein. Resolved in council this date, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by this solicitor.
May I have a motion, please?
Sound move, Madam Mayor.
Mrs. Wolfert, second?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forish, any questions or discussion? Questions? Okay, Barb? This is resolution two thousand thirteen forty-five. Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Baldonari?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jivinangelo?
Yes.
Merrick Griffin?
Yes.
Thirty-six, yes. Motion carried, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item on the agenda appears under the Police Department, and it is a resolution. It is entitled to establishing a handicap disabled veteran van accessible parking space on East Second Avenue. Now therefore be resolved, section one, that parking space located on the northbound side of East Second Avenue being thirty-sixth East Second Avenue, Latrobe, Pennsylvania, adjacent to property of Joseph F. Coon, be in the same as hereby designated as a handicap slash disabled veteran van accessible parking space, and should the applicant no longer reside at the premises located at thirty-sixth East Second Avenue, then, and in that event, the handicap accessible parking space designation set forth herein shall cease and terminate on the last date of occupancy of the subject premises by the applicant. Section two authorizes the city officers to take all steps necessary and place all proper signage necessary to carry into effect this resolution. Section four, or three rather, recites that this resolution shall become effective immediately. And section four recites that any and all other resolutions inconsistent here with are hereby repealed. Motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by this solicitor.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Jivinangelo, second?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forish, any questions or discussion? Questions? Okay, Barb? This is resolution two thousand thirteen forty-six. Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Baldonari?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Jivinangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Merrick Griffin?
Yes.
Thirty-six, yes. Okay, motion carried, thank you.
Madam Mayor, there is nothing that I have for unfinished business, however, there is a motion under due business. I'll wait until we come to that.
Okay, I'll tell you now. Okay, for unfinished business?
Madam Mayor, yes, I have something under unfinished business where the Police Department, I'd like to discuss somewhat the contract that we had proposed to enter into with St. Mitzvah. I'd like to discuss somewhat the contract that we had proposed enter into with St. Vincent College. And there seemed to be some negative attitudes by the Township of Unity in reference to that. And we have thought that we needed approval of the Township of Unity and also the Pennsylvania State Police. And my recommendation is, and I would like to see this happen, if we could not enter into some sort of a discussion for consolidation of St. Vincent College properties with the City of Latrobe and also the Greater Latrobe School District and Adelphi Village, I think that we could offer them police protection if they are willing to pay the price that we need to get. And I just think that that would skirt the requirement, if there is one, that Unity Township must approve it and the state police must approve our use if in fact they were consolidated with the City of Latrobe. Anyway, it's, it's, it's something that I've thought about. There's no tax burden involved that we'd have to pay off because they are charitable institutions, unlike taking some piece of property from Unity Township that pays taxes. The, if you look at St. Vincent College, for instance, we provide them with their water, we handle their wastewater, we offer them the recreational facilities and a path into Latrobe, we have a library for the St. Vincent students, we, we have gone there on fires at least two times in the St. Xavier's, we have trained the children how to escape from fires in St. Xavier's and, and the students at St. Vincent College. And we are presently and currently lending through our Industrial Development Authority monies to St. Vincent College so that they can rebuild. So we're doing everything that really the city does for its own residents and its own property. And I think we have to look into, perhaps, the people in Unity Township want the children protected out there at the Greater Latrobe School District. And there are children too, you know, it's people, it's children from Latrobe that are attending the Greater Latrobe School District. I don't say we have to just say it's a thought that I think maybe, maybe some better minds of my own might want to review at some point and make a consideration out of it, particularly if it could be done without increasing our tax burden on our current citizenship. And anyway, that, that's my comment and my thought.
Following with Mr. Jim's comments, I too, I too want to address the article that was in Friday's Latrobe Bulletin. Mike Obardo, the Township Supervisor, made the statement that, Obardo also commented on a proposal for to distribute Latrobe Police Department to contract services with St. Vincent College, saying, "I'll be damned if the news media or the legislature tries to tell us what to do." Obardo added that he's pleased with state police coverage. He went on to say, "The state police are doing a great job. When it comes to Latrobe and St. Vincent College, I don't think St. Vincent and Latrobe are on the same page. Latrobe wants to get into St. Vincent and then come to Unity Township. I'm not for funding anybody else's budget." Obardo also noted that the township's track record with the mergers with the City of Latrobe has not been good. All I want to say to Mr. Obardo and his, the like-minded citizens of Unity Township, that St. Vincent College came to the city asking for our help. As a private employer, they are entitled to hire a security force on their own. If they want a contract with us, then they're able to do so. And as, as far as Mr. Obardo goes, what's good, he feels to, to remember, what's good for this town is good for the township. What's good for the township is good for the town. He seems to forget that. He is short-sighted in his comments and he has been. He takes every shot he can at this city. What his agenda is, I don't know. If anybody in this room knows where he's coming from, clue me in, because I don't know. He said that the track record wasn't any good and I'm sure he's referring to Latrobe Unity Parks and Rec, which was, which has been responsible for hundreds of thousands of dollars of improvements to the parks and playgrounds in Unity Township and to the Adams Memorial Library, which had a branch at the Township Building, no longer has a branch that serves dozens and dozens of Unity Township residents for years. Now, if he's talking about that as far as not having a good track record, then I think he's way off base and as I said, I don't know what his agenda is.
And I just want to add one comment alongside of that. I'm in agreement with what Mr. Jim and Mr. Boldenary said. It's also important to note that we believe that the state police do an incredible job in this area as well. I'm not sure Mr. Obardo is aware of the fact, but the Latrobe police force often is, is required to go outside of the city limits into Unity Township to assist the state police. The state police assists the Latrobe city police. I don't understand, you know, we, we need to work as a community and as good neighbors and, and I think it benefits all of the residents. So our, our police are out there, they're protecting, they don't stop as soon as they hit the city limits necessarily. If they're required to, if they're required to assist the state police outside the city limits, they do that as our firemen do and as Unity Township's firemen do. So I, I'm with you, Mr. Boldenary. I don't know what the problem is. I don't know why there's, there's this sense of small-mindedness and, and boundary lines. I think we need to work together. Regionalization is, is in the best interest of everyone. And I think the number's more like a couple million dollars that have gone into Unity Township as a result of the Park and Rec merger because of the money that, the grant money that we received, Park and Rec received as a direct result of the merger. So there's a lot of things going on, but I think we do need to set the record straight that we aren't, we weren't, that it was St. Vincent that came to us and we were just trying to be a good neighbor.
Anything else under unfinished business? All right, for, for new business, that resignation of Carter Bolger has been rescinded, so that's not a city manager.
My report is before you stand and will be made available publicly. I just want to comment about one of Mrs. Wolford's comments about the state police and commend the state police backup and assistance and direct engagement on the Lloyd Avenue standoff. The bravery exhibited by not only the state police, but our local police force here in Latrobe, we incurred a lot of overtime costs and these men and women were willing to serve over and above and put their families aside for the sake of the community. In addition to that, a number of not paid people, volunteers, gave literally dozens of hours to support that and donations as well. And equipment used by the Latrobe Volunteer Fire Departments were used in support and again, a lot of money was put to good use, money that is well appreciated by the, you know, from the, the fire departments and such. I just want to say a lot of thanks. I recommend that this council, in light of Mr. King, Patrolman or Officer King of the State Police's injuries, consider at a future meeting, a commendation for him. It is my understanding that he has lost sight in his one eye that was injured, if I'm correct. Nozier, you, you may know more than I do about that, but my understanding was that he has lost sight within that one eye and it's just something, an act of bravery that we cannot overlook. And again, it's an all-time municipal, multi-jurisdictional effort. When, when there's a need, borders go away and first responders step to the call and are very infrequently appreciated to the level of, you know, their heroism and willingness to put their lives on the line.
Just from my report, that was all, what I was going to bring up also, I want to thank the police and the fire department and all the volunteers, so the wonderful job. Sergeant Sando Columbo was there, of course, thank you. And the chief said that the military officer did lose sight of the eye. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Mrs. Wolford, second.
Second.
Mr. Boldenary, all favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carried, thank you.